Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Johnson. We're coming forward immediately. I'm going to preside tonight briefly on behalf of the board, providing under one chair, and also on line of like, on behalf of the board, say, especially welcome the former Commissioner John Cook, who lives in Ohio, in different capacity than certainly that he may be here with Commissioner Cook. The first order of business will be an invocation, if you by your head with me, for brief invocation. Dear Lord, I pray for each board member tonight to be blessed with this honor, selflessness, temperance, and wisdom, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Good joy, for us with pleasure, we just pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, one nation, united in God, and with His love and mercy. First order of business tonight will be the election of Chair. As you remember the board, as we said, a letter, copy of the letter from Ms. McCollough, we're happy to have her with us virtually tonight. In her letter, she resigned the office of Chair for several reasons. The night's election will be with the balance of Ms. McCollough's term that will commence with the night's meeting and would end if we have a meeting on December 6th of this year for a board reorganization, as we normally do. So it will be for a period of less than five months. I spoke with Ms. Goldston, who is currently our Vice Chair, and she's expressed her desire to complete her term as Vice Chair, which will end in December as well. I will initially take nominations from the board members. If there is more than one nomination, we will conduct a roll call vote in alphabetical order.
Mr. Johnson, did that initial letter, it said we don't need to do Vice Chair? It didn't say something about doing them?
Ms...
No, I'm fine with it, I just...
Ms. Goldston has not resigned the position of Vice Chair, and her son handed this down.
I was just based on that first thing we got, it said something about...
I'm not sure.
If this is...
The letter from Ms. McCollough...
Well, we don't have to, I'm good.
That being said, I will open the floor for nominations if there are any. Chair will remain five months of Ms. McCollough's term. I nominate Kate Gibson. Right nominee, you take this. Are there other nominations? If there are, and under your motion, nominations be closed.
So moved.
Your second. Any discussion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Or closed. As I indicated, we will be doing a roll call vote in alphabetical order. First vote again would be Commissioner Alford. Who are going to be voting, Mr. Alford?
Whit Gibson.
Ms. Goldston?
Whit Gibson.
Reverend Gibson?
Certainly Reverend Gibson.
You'll say you can't say Commissioner Gibson.
Whit. Commissioner.
And I won't say Commissioner Gibson, I'll say Commissioner Whit Gibson.
Mr. Ivy? Virtually, Commission will call.
Vote for Commissioner Whit Gibson.
Commissioner Flatt? My math is right, and I believe that Commissioner Gibson has four votes, with the lead and the draw.
Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Whit Gibson. Not Commissioner Reverend. Of course, I'm not the not Reverend. And with that, I will turn it over to the recently elected, newly elected Chair.
Can I do that from here, or do I need to go over? The chair, you can let that be first. I'll do it from here. Is that my fourth? Well, first, I'd like to thank the board members who voted for me, and I would like to thank all the members of the board for participating in the election. I had talked with a couple of commissioners who I thought were seeking this today, or one by text a couple days ago, and one in person, and I think we all agreed, I hoped that we would support whoever was selected. I think it's important that we move forward in a positive way, and I promise you, had I not been the one selected, I would have been all in favor of whoever else might be leading, whether it was Reverend Gibson or anyone else. But that having been said, we'll move to the next thing on the agenda. We normally have a public forum. Mr. Robinson, do we have anybody who has signed up to speak?
I've had no one.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we will conclude the public forum. We now, we have an agenda in front of you. Do I have an approval of the motion to approve the agenda?
Absolutely.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Goldston, second by Reverend B.J. Gibson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
We know that the ayes have it. We have a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Second. John offered as the motion, Reverend Gibson, Mr. Gibson, the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have representatives from the Southeast Airport Authority for a presentation on their budget. We have Seth Hatchell, the Assistant Director of the Airport, and John Cook, the Chairman of the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing Chairman John McCook and myself to attend tonight on behalf of the Southeast Regional Airport Authority. It is an honor. For some of you who may not be aware, the Southeast Regional Airport Authority governs the Longberge-Maxon Airport, two wastewater treatment facility plants, and two water treatment facility plants as well. They also are over much of the land in the Longberge-Maxon Airport industrial park, which is the largest industrial park in Scotland County. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget that was approved at our last meeting on June 24th. It was on a Thursday. The Southeast Regional Airport Authority approved an operating budget for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 of $1,646,724. This was an increase of approximately $29,024 from last year's budget. That increase was mostly attributed to two new lease agreements, one with the University of North Carolina at Pembroke, and one with strategic materials. Are there any questions that Chairman McCook or myself might be able to answer in regards to the budget itself? If there are none, we'll talk a little bit about the projects that are listed. So we're really excited. We have a lot of really cool projects that could potentially be happening at the airport in the coming years of those. We are really looking forward to the runway extension. Senator Tom McKinnon, State Senator with North Carolina, he allocated $8 million from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to go towards this project. And so, once we get that fund, well, we had already received the funding, excuse me, but once the extension is built, we will have, our runway will be 8,500 foot long. That will be the eighth longest runway in the state, and we will be the fifth airport in the state with the runway that size. So that might sound a little confusing, but Charlotte Douglas or Raleigh Durham might have two runways of longer than 8,500 foot. So it will be the eighth longest in the state, but the fifth airport with the runway that size. So that's very, very exciting. Something that's not mentioned on the list is we have also begun the initial phase of strategic planning at the Longberge-Maxon Airport, the Southeast Regional Airport Authority. And so, our kickoff for the steering committee will actually be next Monday, July 19th. And we have asked County Manager Kevin Patterson and Economic Developer Mark Ward to participate on that steering committee to represent the county and the county's interests. So we are looking forward to that. We will be partnering with the Department of Commerce and the Division of Aviation to help facilitate that process. So that's very exciting. We're also looking at a new logo. The logo that we currently have was developed in the 1990s, so it's getting close to 30 years old, so we're looking forward to something that will incorporate aviation, economic development, industrial growth, and water and sewer. So we're looking forward to that. We've reached out to a graphic designer, and we are in the conceptual phase of that. And of course, y'all are familiar with the Foreign Trades Zone. I know Mark and Mr. Kevin have done a great job of informing you of that, but we want to express our gratitude to the county for just helping us through that process, and as of two weeks ago, our formal application to the U.S. Foreign Trades Zone Board has been submitted. So we have about a six to nine month turnaround on that, but they tell you six to nine months with, kind of as a longer, to err on the side of caution, if you will. So we are hoping to hear back sooner rather than later in that regard, but we have hired a consulting firm, Alliance Operating Systems out of Texas, and Kathy Wilkins is the Vice President of that corporation, and she is of the opinion, as well as the site administrator of Foreign Trades Zone 93, that there are no hurdles in our path to Foreign Trades Zone status. So we are looking forward to that. That's going to be a great asset for Scotland County and to entice growth, economic growth into the county. And things are looking up for the Southeast Regional Airport Authority. This year alone, we have seen our general aviation, which is smaller planes, our fuel cells have more than doubled in this year alone. But when I first started in July of 2019, we had eight base aircraft on the field. As of our last total, two weeks ago, we had 18 base aircraft. So every single hangar at the airport is filled, and we actually have a waiting list. So that's something that's very exciting, and we're looking forward to that. And on this project list, we actually have a new set of T-hangers to build, so hopefully we can bring in more revenue to Scotland County through that. But that's something else that we are looking forward to, and we do look forward to our continued partnership with Scotland County as we do hope to grow economic growth and through aviation, but also through economic development. So we would like to thank you for your time and that we could come here today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, I'll try to answer any question that you might have on behalf of the Southeast Regional Airport Authority.
Anyone have any questions?
So the little green is everything that's beginning?
Yes, so pretty much that's everything in the engineering phase, if you would. Right, so there's nothing that's, you know, concrete being put down or anything like that, but yes, sir. And then, all those years are kind of a guesstimate, more or less, with COVID, of course, everything was pushed back a little bit, especially with funding. But as of our conversations with W.K. Dixon, which is our engineering firm, that is the, according to them, that is the anticipated year of completion for those projects. So the airport layout plan update and environmental assessment are the first two steps for the runway extension, so that's why those are first, and the airport layout plan update should be accomplished by the end of summer, and the environmental assessment by the end of the fall. So we, once those are finishing up, we'll be kind of rolling into the next phase of that runway extension.
Looks very ambitious.
But we're excited to make it happen, so...
Well, we, I've been on the periphery of some conversations about it. I think it's a great thing, and I think that the new authority is going to work extremely well, and we appreciate everybody that was part of the reorganization in both City Longberge and Town Maxon. And we're participating in a very small way, but we do appreciate all that's going on out there. Do we get to hear anything from Mr. McCook?
Only if you have to. He told me I was not in politics anymore, so I don't have to talk down the mic.
Well, I just want to make sure you have an opportunity for something you wish to say.
So I just want to, as part of the reorganization, I'm appointed, I'm the appointed member from the Scotland County side, you know, and I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the newly formed Airport Authority. And I think it's important that Scotland County have a voice there, because it is such an important cause in the economic development efforts of our community, and as most of you know, I've been pretty actively engaged in the economic development part of our activities over the last 10 or 12 years. So it fits pretty well with what I want to do, and while I would, I'd be lying to say I miss being a Commissioner, there are things about it that I miss, and one of the things is all the great people that I've gotten to speak to tonight, and just want all of you to know that I thank you for your commitment to Scotland County. I know what it takes to be in that chair, and I really appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate your confidence in me and appointing me to the Airport Authority.
We appreciate your service, and thank both of you for being here tonight. We invite you back, and we don't, whatever timeframe you believe is appropriate, I would like to see that we kept up to date on everything that's going on. I think it's important that we know it, we want to support it, and it's kind of hard to support it if we don't know what's happening, so...
We'll keep in the loop, I promise.
All right, we appreciate it. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Ken.
Anybody else have any questions, be one of them. Thank you both. Next on the agenda, discussion with Dr. Alex Johnson. I'm going to look to Commissioner B.J. Gibson.
I'm sure you all can hear him. So the committee met on the 28th of June. Present at that meeting was Councilmember Mirjol Adams, School Board members Woodside, Banks, Tyson, Commissioner Ivy, and myself. Councilmember Don Reiner and Commissioner Alford were not able to make the meeting. There are copies of the minutes in our package tonight, but overall, it was really the initial conversation that we were holding as representative of our respective boards, and just kind of talking about some of the ideas that we all had, hopes that we had. It really kind of went off of the same conversation that we had initially in talking about trying to make this a community resource center. I think at the end of the minute you see that Jason recorded, two of the main conversations was for each of us to go back to our respective boards and just find out how committed our boards were to actually making this happen before we put too much time and energy into it. I will tell you that one of the concerns that was probably most prominent was, you know, taking a ride is easy if everybody gets in the car, but somebody's got to be the driver. And I think the city wanted to know, and the schools, who was going to drive it? If the county was going to commit to being in the lead, of course, the schools have not sold that building or put it up for auction or how it can be bid, because we asked them not to, but at some point, somebody's got to take ownership of that building, or the school is left to do what they're doing, or they're going to need to move forward with that process. So that's kind of where we are. If the county is willing to lean on that or not, so it wouldn't know kind of how to move forward. I wish I had anything to add, anything I missed.
They can only, they can't sell it. They only sell one, so I think their plan is to do South Scotland first, and that kind of delays the I.D. Jasons, the office, somebody would only want to do one.
I didn't see it. It was a feeling that the city was ready to kind of partnership with us or be a major player in the city government.
From the representation of the meeting, I did not, but from Councilmember separately, I feel like they're going to support it, but they just needed to have a lead. Councilmember Reiner could not make the meeting, and Councilmember Adams was just adamant about the fact that she was there to get information to take back to them who were not willing to take it.
Or if somebody's going to take the lead, if the county's willing to do that. Tell me, if you can, as best you can, what taking the lead means.
I think he did want to take ownership of that building. I think for our meeting, it was, so you got a building, and even if we decided to provide all the services that we talked about, who is going to be in charge of the building? Who's going to own the building? Who's going to lead this project? And I will say, I think I'm correct, Commissioner Ivy, from Ms. Adams, City Councilmember Adams, she felt like they would possibly support some, but only if we were to say that we were going to take ownership of the building. I think the school board was the same, but they, if they had used the building, they keep the building, but they don't have, you know, good capacity to take care of ownership of that building, and all of that into it.
Mr. Chairman, it just seemed to me, we're back to square one, where we have to do a study. Taking the lead always entails money. How much money Angela, you know, McCollough's three entities? Because when you say, "I'm willing to participate," we're talking money. Anybody can participate physically, but someone has to pay. I was unable to get to that meeting, but it just seemed to me, we have to go back and do a study, and what is the actual cost to run that operation annually before we can make the decision? I guess I'm talking to myself a bit.
Yes, and I think I would agree with exactly what you're saying, but again, before we even go putting in that energy, I think for each of the boards, it was all we committed to making this happen. I think is the question. You know, my stance is still the same. Wakeham has a community center, Laurin Hill is getting a community center. I have no reason in my mind, while we can't provide this to the citizens of the city of Longberge, of whom we service as well, and I think it makes it a whole lot easier when we got these three boards coming together, these three entities coming together to make it happen, but we've got to figure out what parts of the building we're going to use and all that stuff, but I think we just got to decide if we're committed to doing it.
Does the, from your initial conversations, is there, does the school system expect to use any part of this property so that they would have some financial investment in what we do?
I gather from our conversation that they wanted to work with providing some tutorial services from the building, and some of the things of that nature, partnering with some of their, the actual school buildings to provide some people their after-schooling. So I think they have somebody to work with.
That's kind of what I got, more than after the school, after I was...
It was more of an after-school, I think, you know?
You said they were...
Commissioner Gibson, are you, when you talk about taking ownership of the building, are you looking for this board to make the decision to take that ownership at this point?
Whatever the board wants to do. We're going to meet again on the 21st, and each of, and that was to give the school board members time to go back and talk to their boards and find out how they should move forward, and to give the city that same time. So I'm not sure exactly what this group wants to do, you know, it's left to our group as how we want to move forward.
I really support the I.D. project. I would like to see some type of study done so we can see actually what we're going to have to do, you know, everybody together, whoever's going to take majority part of it, I'd like to see, have an overall picture of exactly what are we, what it doesn't entail, what is the cost, you know, predict your estimated cost of renovating that facility here, and that is like to see what part of it we want to renovate, right? You know, I think about the whole part of I.D., I mean...
I don't think our committee talked about utilizing the entire building, but I did not gather from that meeting that anyone was interested in much renovation. The school is in good condition. It's the operating numbers that will...
Yeah, that's what I mean. Whatever cost would be needed to begin the operation, that's what I was talking about.
When you say operations, is it assumed there is a current ongoing cost of that building?
There is. Well, there is, of course.
And is that what you're suggesting, that somebody needs to take ownership or to take responsibility for making those payments?
Tim, we kind of talked about between $70,000 to $100,000.
Now, that was the number that they had with the utilities, but now that was a fully operational school that went through the utility, running somewhere around $7,000 quarter, square, hour, that doesn't count the lawn, probably is quite a bit the size of that facility. So, you know, it wouldn't be that number, because you're not going to have a fully operational school, kitchen and all that stuff going on at the time, and it is zoned out to where each room is individually air-conditioned, heated, so you don't have to, it's always good with that. So, but, you know, as far as the, we're under the assumption right now that the school, if this was decided and we wanted to take an ownership, and I'm definitely not saying do that tonight, that the school would give it to us, but that's an assumption right now. I need to make that come across. They may want to come back and say, "Well, you want $8,000 for whatever," I'm not sure how that works, but I don't think they would, if it was against us. We didn't get into that, all of what we just talked about. We had the one presentation gentleman rocking there in that place, straight out of my mind.
ROC.
ROC, and we refer him to the school, that's really who we need to talk to. My concern about that place or any other place, not that they don't have money or whatever, is that they get into it three years down the road, and now they can't operate it, and we end up with, and it's in bad shape. Them, them really.
But someone has this question, probably one of them, that was a question, but I.D. has a lot of classroom that goes in the school, right? Okay, but to come to office for somebody to lease a rent for as an office, what? You know, I'm concerned about what the cost would be in technology and granted making the classroom as your office, you see what I'm saying? You say that no renovation may be necessary, per se. I was kind of wanting to how you take this classroom. I'm not fighting that. I like the idea, I just was questioning about how you deal with each one of those classrooms and turn it into an office.
I think there are cosmetic things that would have to be done, but nothing, nothing major. The school operates, so they got all the networking and that type, you know, stuff that's needed in the building, and there were offices all throughout the building, not just at the front, so I think that's, that's pretty minimal.
Yeah, and if, let's just say, the schools were using one end of it in certain classrooms, that they would be responsible for their, their building up cubes or whatever they're going to do with their roof, to use, to use, if they're going to do it, and, and, and watch the DSS make use of it, you can cube it out instead of steel walls.
Yeah.
You can put cubes in there. Technology's already there, the power, everything else is there, so it would just be a matter of keeping it out, so however who was going to use it, to use it.
That makes sense. It really does, thank you.
And it's, my hesitation is this, is if the county were to take ownership of it, we, there needs to be, I think, a buy-in from the schools and from the city that they will share in some of that cost if we're providing services that the school takes advantage of. Hopefully, there would be things that the city could use before, we've already spoken about possibly moving some county offices there, whether it's social services, obviously that could be a benefit to us. So I think there is a great opportunity for us, but I don't want the county to take that responsibility and get, have a large property that's got great cost that everybody else is not bought into the same degree that we bought. So I guess what I'm thinking is, do we need a better idea of what the plan's going to be, what the original initial costs are going to be, and how that might be shared? If we came up with, you know, I think, obviously, there's, somebody's going to need some money, I would guess, that we pay somebody to come in and say, "This is how you would set it up, this is what these things could be used for." I don't know that we have the expertise in our own group to do that, that we would have to hire somebody to help us put that, put that together. And if that's going to take some money, I can, I'd rather see us spend some money and do us that, and have an idea of what the overall plan is going to be. and do us that and have an idea of what the overall plan's going to be instead of going ahead and taking ownership of something that we may all, may later wish we hadn't done.
Well, until they give us any kind of a buy-in on that twenty-first.
Chairman Gibson asked me.
Uh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I've been listening attentively, attentively, um, and the sound is very good for all of those who are wondering. Um, this is a good discussion about IEJ, but I tend to agree with what Mr. Alford said at the beginning and echo some of Betty's remarks and your remarks as well, Mr. Chairman, that our roadmap for what our outcome is not clear enough to me for this board to be taking any action at this time. I think it has to be a three-way equal partnership, uh, before we can, you know, move forward because there will always be hidden costs. I toured that building back in the winter and, um, it's not ready to move in. There is a lot of work that has to be done. And we, if we had an outline of programs, of commitments, of entities that were gonna be put into the building, it would be much easier for us to go forward. But I really do wanna know, first of all, is the school system gonna give the building to the member? And what, um, amount of support financially can we expect from the city? Because I'm afraid to say that the county could be left holding the whole thing when it's supposed to be a partnership. And I don't think that's the road that I would want to go down with the county being the primary responsible entity for this, uh, Community Research Center.
Yeah, and, and we're not, by any means, so that it might agree to take ownership. We're just trying to put what's been done so far so we know the board's feeling that our next meeting, whether this, you know, this may be, we may have a drop dead pause and we're not gonna do it anymore. Or they may come back to us and say, "We're not doing anything in it." And then that pretty well makes it clear what's gonna happen there. So, yeah, but we're not asking, asking for any action tonight. This was definitely just a, a review of what's going on so far and, and do you wanna keep moving forward with it or not? I mean, because if the answer's not, then we don't need to waste any time.
And, and I will say this in response to what Mr. McCollum just said. I am certain, and I, I didn't even expect it to be an equally shared project. The schools are not going to equally share in this project. The city is not gonna equally share. They're expecting us to lead it. Um, I think they're all gonna contribute, but I doubt very seriously that it's not gonna be an equal share. Let's just be honest. Um, but as Commissioner Ivic said, I, I, you know, my request might have certainly not for us to decide yes or no. But Commissioner Ivic and myself, nor Commissioner Alford and the others, we don't wanna spin our wheels and then we put a lot of time and energy into trying to move it forward and then we come back and you say, "Uh, absolutely not." You know, so that's what we wanna know tonight, some conversation, so we know if this is worth our work or not. And they're having those same conversations.
I understand, okay.
Well, uh, and I think you've heard from each of us. I don't know that that's enough. Um, it, it, I, I don't know that I envisioned it being an equal partnership either. I think that ultimately there's a benefit to, uh, uh, things that the county is responsible for. That could benefit from that property being rehabilitated and being a, not only would it, uh, provide some activities that we believe ought to be in all communities, but it also takes care of a, of, of a piece of property that's got its, has some historical significance to that community. But that's just one person's opinion. And then, and we've got, obviously, if this comes to a vote at some point, we're gonna have to make a decision about what we're willing to invest financially.
Well, I don't understand this right here. Do we take the community coming here like the Dean of Sherpa? The Dean of Laurhill? Would it take the community coming here and intimidate y'all? For y'all to do something in that community?
No, sir, I don't think it would like that.
But it seem like there's, it's always negative talk about it. But they, 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 if we packed this hall of people who look like me, it's a bit of intimidation. Because that school over there, that building over there, they know we're doing it. Not just the back there. It's gonna hit the community. And that's the historical problem.
Can you tell me what I just said that was not in favor of that?
I'm not just talking to you out there. I said this, this board. I feel that all of us, and I can read from the line. And you ask the questions, the answers they hear. We got news, this negative number. First, I didn't hardly cause. It ain't hardly no cause from Laurhill came through. And you sit, sit there and look back at the numbers right there. Steady piling on. Nobody seen nobody cause. They didn't see nobody cause. Uh, we, Sheriff gave us figures, what he wanted. Temptation, that's what it is, temptation. And that's why, you know, it's easier, you know, you give it to them. They still had to say anything about five hundred thousand dollars that we just threw out the money at the moment. That's five hundred thousand dollars. No, nobody seen nobody. Y'all don't wanna talk about it when you come in here. Y'all don't wanna talk about it.
And, and two, what, what Commissioner Ivic was saying, you know, I've had people that ask me, you know, "Do we need to galvanize the group? And do you like Wakeham here? Well, Wakeham got their building. And do you like Laurhill it's done?" And my answer has been, "Just give our board time. We're gonna try to make it happen." Um, and so just kinda to what he said, I do. I think we can, we can make it happen if we wanna make it happen.
Either.
If we don't wanna make it happen, it will not happen. Um, and I'm sure Kevin is, is in a position of wanting to know what we're gonna do before he starts spinning his wheels as our kind of manager to make it happen. So I know for me, that's just my question tonight. Is it something that we're gonna, that we wanna see happen? Because I know how, how we work. I've, I've been watching it long enough. If we want it, we'll make it happen. If we don't want it, we'll block it and not make it happen. And, and I just, I really speak as, as trying to represent those who I know want something to happen. And I wanna say to our board from the embarrassment of having to fill this room with our constituents, when we all know that that's what our constituents want. We know that. Our community wants this building restored.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I wouldn't be embarrassed if a thousand people came in here. I would welcome that. Only thing I want to say is, we're talking about the tax rate. I don't disagree with anything that's been said. When you have to pay for something, you have to run it like a business because it is a business running this county. I think everybody want Johnson School to retain, improve the use. But all the things we say, that's gonna take the place of M-O-N-E-Y. How are we going to pay for it? We have to answer that upfront. That's not hard. But you have to give the money in line before you can decide to do anything. And the Laurhill project belongs to Scotland County. It's just in Laurhill. It doesn't belong to Laurhill. We don't need to float out there, "I'm from Laurhill." We don't need to float out there. We're giving Laurhill something. We're not. It belongs to Scotland County. And just like Laurhill have always come to Laurhill, to our facilities or to Scotland County facilities, the folk in Laurhill, they're welcome. They know, they own that as well as they do anything else. So we don't want to concur to facts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, what I would say to the three members of the committee is that I think it's something we are interested in. I think it's something we need to know a little more about what the plan is gonna be and whether or not the schools and the city will participate and to what degree their commitment is. And then I think if, if we have to decide that it's all on us, that's a different decision, but it's still a decision that we can make. But I think we need to, in my mind, we need to know a little more about what the, what the, what the plan's going to be. I think whether or not the, the schools would be willing to donate the building that the property does would certainly be an important piece of information. Um, and, uh, and what commitment this, this, the city and the schools are willing to make and even if it's just for the, for those things that they will able to benefit directly from. I think there needs to be, uh, and I think this will work better if we've got greater number of partners involved. But I think, I certainly think it's worth the time to pursue this work.
Keep working.
And now, as the purpose of this being the night was just to, because it was a flat note and we didn't need to waste our time on it or anybody else's time. That we can come to some, you know, and all that stuff with everybody involved because I think they're all interested, but they're in the same position with what's involved costs. That's all we defer to that.
Yes, all of it.
And, and exactly what are we gonna do and how are we gonna do it?
Yeah.
And so, and, and, you know, there's no one entity gonna have that entire facility.
Right.
Um, it's just a matter of how we split that up and call that costs. It's a, in, in process, so.
And, and, and not that there's any rush to do anything, but I think any property that you sit, it's, it's not good for. So if we're going to make a decision, we need to make it move forward, that's right. Be, be whichever way we can. Uh, and if it's move forward and resurrect that property, then it's gonna cost some money. And we need to figure out how much it's gonna cost and who's gonna participate in doing that. And at that point, we can make the decision as to whether or not.
We're, we're definitely not looking for a decision.
Okay, but I didn't think you were looking for that.
Just, are, do we wanna keep going along?
Any other comments anybody wishes to make on that subject? All right, uh, next, Laurhill, you present.
Okay, with this, we did have the bid opening, uh, three weeks ago, two weeks ago. Uh, the bids did come in lower than expected, which was just above the original estimates that we had towards the end of last year. The apparent low bidder, and it has been verified by the architect, is Haas Contracting. Uh, the base bid is at two million five hundred fifty thousand dollars. The amount, uh, the alternates would be an additional one hundred eighty thousand dollars. And, uh, that, you know, we had a number of bidders that we did meet these. All of the bids were surprisingly, uh, close in comparative numbers with this two point, uh, five-five bid, the lowest, two point eight-five being the highest. So, uh, we did go out from a two hundred and seventy day window to a four hundred and twenty day window construction cycle. And that was what helped bring the prices down. Uh, we had several contractors who basically said that they would not have bid it if we did not extend the construction window. But we do have, uh, the base bid, uh, for two million five hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. And that is up to the board to, uh, consider that base bid. It's the recommendation of the architect and recommendation of staff that Haas Contracting be awarded, uh, this. This is approximately, uh, this is about a hundred thousand dollars over the amount that was already allocated into the capital projects for this.
Now, this alternate, is that the things that are listed on this G1, G2, G3?
Yes, sir.
So things like the, uh, security gate climbing area? I didn't think we were gonna have the climbing.
And those are just on there, and there's still some modifications that we can go back in and make out. And that was, the climbing area was supposed to be an alternate also.
Well, I thought it left it off.
Yeah.
Because in favor of the people.
Right. And that may actually be something, assuming the bids awarded, that can go into value engineering after that. So it could be something, we can reduce the bump to the wall and then possibly, uh, add in the alternates for the people.
Phil, go back and tell me again about the four hundred days.
Uh, we originally had a construction window in the bid of two hundred and seventy days from the award of the contract. Uh, but because, uh, all of the contractors were saying, this is a steel frame building. Uh, and all of the contractors were saying that it would take an additional six months plus to get the, to get the building in place, to actually get it from the vendor. Uh, for that reason, uh, we extended that two hundred and seventy days by an additional five months.
So, two seventy-two?
Four twenty.
Four twenty.
And that's just because the supply chain.
Right.
All the buildings are not.
But it's probably not gonna take that long.
It should not.
Right. I know they don't take a guarantee that, but because once you place the order for that steel that comes, it's gonna base that order.
Yes.
And, you know, and, and, um...
Any, any other questions?
So the two point five, I think I asked you this before, does not include wood? I think you said landscaping was the only thing that would not include it, right?
Uh, landscaping was, landscaping was not in there. Uh, and it was using some of the existing parking lot. There was some resurfacing, but it's not a brand-new parking lot. Uh, and the alternates, like the pickleball court's not in there in this point. So, but this does put, put in the building connecting the water, put in, putting in the, uh, septic tank into the field. So, but it would be the building, the actual grounds would be developed outs. Accurate.
Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to board.
Yes, I'm moving the, um, except this bid, um, little bid. Two million five hundred forty-nine, probably, probably. You said one eighty, but it's one forty-eight up there. I said, oh, I moved one eighty.
Uh, it's, uh, no, the alternate, if you accept all the alternates, a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And those can be done later after we addition, uh, do this because there could be some, uh, change orders that we can do with the alternates as we get in and do some value engineering.
My motion is that we accept the bid.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a question. So with the alternates, the total moving budget, the two point six nine, correct?
Yes, sir.
But you said that we did not have to do that.
Correct.
On this particular one, right?
Correct. So, so the additions will, you will come back to us with?
Yes.
As they?
And what we've, uh, talked about in the past, or at least when we did renovations in the Morgan complex, our Morgan, Morgan Center, uh, we brought the Capitol Committee together and looked at, uh, the alternates and also any other value engineering. Like if we don't do the climbing wall inside, that's a savings of seventy thousand, which would allow us basically to do the pickleball court.
And that's what I thought we originally said in, in the Capitol. If you heard anything wrong.
We oughta Capitol Committee.
That's what I'm saying. I think, I thought that's what we said, leave that climbing wall off and do the pickleball.
It was.
We oughta Capitol Committee.
So is the climbing walls still in the?
It is currently, I will, it is currently.
In the current bid?
But it will wash out if you want to do it.
Right. And there are just some simple things that we can do that way and then bring those back. But this will allow us to start it.
Okay. Start the, start the clock.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? Are you unanimous with the project signifier saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe it was unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ben here.
I was telling Mr. Gibson, Commissioner Gibson, that he is on the Capitol Committee now that Paul says he's on that committee.
I was appointed that committee. Were you saying that y'all had to have a meeting?
No, we haven't had a meeting.
Oh, yes.
But you took most of your assignments and that was one of your assignments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, my lady.
Take care.
The Commissioner Gibson part, we gotta start.
Yeah, I know. And Mr. Ivic's on there and I'm on there and Bob Davis is on there. So now you're on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Was my part?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm up. All right, we just have one appointment. This is the, uh, appointment of the... All right, we just have one appointment, this is the, uh, appointment of the Transportation Court and National Committee. And these are staff appointments, and it's not Mark Moore, Economic Development, and Robert Simpson, Management. I move that we accept these appointments.
We have a motion and a second. We have a second from Commissioner Call. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. Uh, so, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Colston.
George Caldwell is on line.
Now, Mr. Caldwell?
You may take a second. But going over some of this until he is, uh, able to speak, um, we're continuing our trend. Uh, again, the regular chart that you've seen is, uh, stable, these bars are never going to go down just because it's a human, it's. But what we're really looking at are, uh, where we've been, we've hit just over, just under 4,000 cases. Uh, but with it right now, we are actually at, uh, as of this morning, the Health Department was tracking 16 active cases of Scotland County residents, which is the lowest we have been at in well over a year. The two metrics here that we look at, because it allows a national comparison, are the new cases, and it's the new cases in the last two weeks, per 100,000 people, at just under 29, uh, which puts us in a strong, in a better position. Uh, and I coded that under yellow because it's in, uh, in some of the reporting, that puts us under a moderate risk area. Uh, then the percent positive of the number of tests done are just under 3%, which puts us in a low, uh, low-risk category. Which again, is also better than we've been at, uh, since, honestly, since we've been tracking these metrics.
And as you put it, has the Delta virus to this area, you don't know about that?
Uh, it's hard to tell locally which strains are out there. But I, but the Delta virus has, I believe it has been found in North Carolina. Because once some virus is detected, they only send so many samples to the state's labs to get the full virology count to determine which strain it is. So, but it, it is in North Carolina.
Now, Mr. Caldwell, are you online with us?
I'll be first. I don't know. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Here, Commissioner McColl, if you don't mind, you might want to mute your, your microphone for right now.
Okay, uh.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I would just, on top of what the early, sorry, I'm kind of having technical issues from home today, for some reason, my connection is not really good. Uh, so there has been a lot of questions about how we need a booster to the vaccine. So, and that is critically important for people to understand that because, uh, although the Pfizer is considering to recommend that they have vaccine, they should have a booster to the vaccine. But the FDA and CDC, uh, released, had a press release and said, well, we don't need a booster to the vaccine right now. So, uh, what does that mean is there is not enough clinical evidence or there is not enough laboratory evidence or wholehearted evidence to suggest that Americans need a booster, certain dose at this time. So that is not whole until all evidence are presented. Uh, and, and together, various, is, uh, right now, in North Carolina, almost 8% of COVID cases, COVID hospitalization, uh, I want those who are not, who are not vaccinated. So, we are still suggesting that get a vaccine, uh, as they can because of the variants. And, and, and also because, because of here, we don't have the capacity to do genetic sequencing. That, of course, I'm going to be, uh, maybe we'll correct the CEO for Scotland Health System, I mean, next week's, next week, Friday, so we can discuss on that as to what we can do. But my suggestion is going to be, if you have gotten the vaccine and have symptoms of the COVID, I recommend that you get test, you go ahead and get a test. Uh, because we don't know it, we don't have the capacity to do genetic sequencing in this county, and there are few public health laboratories that can do that. So my recommendation is going to be, even if you had a vaccine and it's three symptoms, is I recommend that you take a test and do a test. Because sometimes we get forced positive, things like that, but I'm going to discuss and break that those who are vaccinated, in case they are at a hospital for, for COVID, then we try to see if we can send their specimen to the public health laboratory to give confirmation, to make sure that we don't have the variant. Uh, so that's, that's, that's what we are looking out for. As of today, I think we are on the right track, but, uh, uh, we, we just have to be, stay, I mean, if you are not vaccinated, I'm going to recommend that you, when you are public, you still wear masks. Uh, because we, because of the new variant, which is really, really, is rapidly spreading across the state and this whole area. Um, so that will be on top of what Kevin said, that would be my out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Caldwell, what is the percentage statewide that has not been vaccinated?
Uh, can you repeat that?
Statewide, what's the percentage that's not vaccinated?
So, you think that's a 43%, 43% of the general population got full vaccinated, got full vaccine? So if you look at 43%, it's essentially 20%. So a huge chunk of the population don't have the vaccine. Uh, and then here, in Scotland County, we have about, uh, 36% of the population in Scotland County that have taken full vaccine, two doses. And then we have, we have got, uh, 39% of population that at least one dose of the vaccine. So, I mean, we, we are, we are heading to the right directions, but the vaccination rate is, to my understanding, is still very low. Um, because our target for Scotland County is at least to get to 60% by the end of this year. Uh, and the governor was suggested that he was looking at at least, uh, 60, 60, 65%, but that is not, I don't think we can achieve that on the next, uh, they may not likely achieve that considering the low vaccination rate. However, there are a lot of people who are in the place for people to get a vaccine. Uh, and it's going to be difficult for us to get to normal activity completely if we got, uh, a low number of population that got a vaccine. And then we are having the new variant, and my question is, based on this variant, would there be an adaptation, uh, with the virus evolving? Uh, and there's a case that are, I mean, it is not really this significant to look at, because once you have mutations going on, uh, the, the chance of an adaptation happening, evolving is very high. And the only way we can get rid of that is to get a good number of the population that got a vaccine. And, but that's where we are right now.
And so with that sense, uh, as, uh, Mr. Caldwell said, 43% of the state is vaccinated, 36% of Scotland County is vaccinated, one in three people, just over. The big thing of it is, is making sure that we continue to our vaccination push. Uh, it is very low turnout right now, but please remind people that we do have it, it's still available at the Health Department. Because right now, a lot of it is this Delta virus, Delta variant that's out there, uh, because there's less natural exposure that we've all had to it. So, uh, anybody that we can continue to push and get, hope, the best goal is to get at least 60% of vaccination rate. Uh, because if you're not getting there, you're still, you don't have a, a community resistance to it, and at that one time, you have more chance for variant, variants.
And, and on top of that, Kevin, I know there has been questions about people saying, what about natural immunity? If they have been exposed to the virus, have you been immune to the virus, not needed vaccine? And as of today, really, there is no scientific evidence to suggest that if you have been infected with the virus, uh, you have, you have developed natural immunity. Uh, I mean, for other diseases, when you are infected with the virus, you can, you can develop natural immunities within length. But the COVID, for the COVID, it's a live virus, so there is really not a scientific evidence to suggest now that if you are being exposed to the virus, then you will develop natural immunity. That's not the egg. Uh, and people are pushed for heavy immunity, which of course needs to get at least 70% of the population vaccinated initially, what you can get. Are we going to get to that one? I don't know. Uh, because considering certain parts of the countries are not, have low vaccination rates, it could be very hard to get the heavy immunity, considering that. So, for the healthy public, what we have been doing is to take the vaccines to the communities, we have been doing a lot of community events to make sure that we encourage people to get a vaccine. Uh, the vaccine, all three vaccines are proven to be certainly effective, although there are certain cases, rare cases, that you have, you develop, but again, that is suggesting that despite things, I say, it's better to take it than not to take it, because your life is at stake right now. Uh, again, I can say it's better to get a vaccine than to go and get caught to the lives when a person will be able to live. And the vaccine has proven to prevent that, to prevent significant, uh, illness. So my suggestion is, if I say it's free, you don't have to pay for it, we are working hard to take the vaccine to the community. But it's going to take a lot of hours to sit there, it's time for us to get a vaccine and get back to normal activity. My concern is, if we don't get the vaccine going down, going to the fall, I'll be concerned because of the new variant. Like I said again, we don't know yet if there's going to be an adaptation. So I think for now, our best choice is to, to push for people to get a vaccine.
Okay, then, thank you, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Is speaking to our board is, and perhaps, maybe Mr. Caldwell prefer to this, but is there something that we as a community can be doing to improve, improve that vaccination rate?
Uh, the big thing of it is, is, um, Mr. Caldwell mentioned that the Health Department is, we're doing more outreach, doing smaller events. So it can be easily be a situation, you know, we're not looking for a 300-person event right now. We'd love to, but, you know, it might be, you know, you have people at a, um, church event or some, or a social, uh, social club or something like that, that has people who are not vaccinated, but are interested in it. So it might be something that they would come to an event where they vaccinate 20 people. Uh, you know, at one point in time, the state wanted to make, because the vaccine was so short supply, they wanted to make sure if you've got 10 doses, you use 10 doses. Now, it's a situation where if you have one person who wants the vaccine, take that 10-dose vial and give them a one, and give that one dose, even if you don't have the other nine. So, uh, the big thing of it is, is if you know for people or groups or small groups, um, the Health Department is willing to work out an arrangement where they'll come to you.
Well, hell, then, uh, if you, I, I think I've been having a little conversation with you exactly before we got, that Monday, you know, the, uh, rescue plan, what is American Rescue Plan?
Yes.
We and I talked slightly, briefly, not slightly, but briefly, about, um, dividing some small incentive to people in Scotland County to get vaccinated. And is that something that we can look, do, think about in terms, women get ready, then really talk about the American Rescue Plan and how we're going to use this fund? I was saying we've got to that point yet. Is that something that we can possibly film and date?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, and if you don't mind, I'll just go on to, uh, my report, uh, because that's the, uh, that was one of the first things, is looking at, I want to focus on coming up with strategies that I can come back in and start bringing back to the board on, this is how we think we can move forward. Uh, of course, I want to be working with the city, looking at our water system. Uh, we're working with the local council of government, because they're doing a nine-county re, or seven-county region study on broadband, uh, with UNCT. So we're going to be working on that front there. But some of that is also coming back in and looking at some potential grants to community organizations, small local businesses, um, as well as other governmental services. I know some communities are talking about cash cards. There are little gift cards that they're getting, you get a vaccine, we'll give you this gift card. Because you are, it's just, there are certain communities, certain neighborhoods, that are just not taking the vaccine. Uh, and it's not one group or another, it's, it's spread out. Uh, but there's, you know, looking at trying to find interesting ways of getting people to come in and, uh, take the vaccine and having these one-time funds. Now, we can do that, also, you know, you're talking about small amounts, but they wind up stimulating the economy. You go off and you give somebody 50 bucks, you know, the average person, they're going to spend 50 bucks in the community. You know, you give that to a bank, they're going to invest it. Uh, you know, so there are other advantages there as well, in addition to, uh, getting additional vaccination rates, but also, uh, community investment. Uh, and I know there are also, uh, some community groups that are also dealing with COVID in different directions. So it would be an interesting opportunity of looking, uh, coming in, trying to find ways of helping some of these groups that are currently active, uh, dealing with COVID-related issues. Not that they're out there trying, that they're being nurses or something like that. But, uh, I know like Project Inasmuch is working this year, uh, they're starting the summer meal delivery, or the summer snack bags. They're doing that, uh, over the summer when they not in the past. And, uh, that's something that they're expecting, that's going to cost around $20,000 that they had planned for. And, you know, but there are other community organizations that are being impacted by this. They're not, it's not a direct COVID, but COVID's causing the steps that are hitting this, uh, that can be there. And I know one thing that we've done for community grants in the past, or last year, uh, instead of trying to work directly with a number of agencies, we actually used United Way of Scotland County as kind of a distributor. They went off and they allocated, I think we did $50,000 to them. And they used that, and they funded about nine different local agencies. And they had a, uh, application window and did that. Actually, I think it was $75,000 that we allocated. Because Church Community Services was one of the larger recipients through that process. And we use them because they already have, they already worked with so many community agencies in funding. Uh, so that might be an easy and direct partnership that we already have in place, that we can do, that we can reach out into the community. At least one way that we can reach out to the community, uh, fairly quickly. If the board was interested in doing something like that. if the board was interested in doing something like that. And also, some of this is going to be, is going to be tied in with the state's budget proposals, which everything I'm hearing is, we're, we're expecting the state to submit a budget to the governor in the August timeframe, or in August. A lot of that's going to be involving the state by the ARP fund, some of that's going to be infrastructure, some of that's going to be small business. So what we're looking at, or even our board is looking at those, to find ways that we can also create small business grants that don't overlap what the state's going to do. Like the state is going to do something, some of our larger businesses, even our larger local businesses, have been able to take advantage of what the state and federal programs have done. But there are a lot of small businesses, mom and pops, sole practitioners, that frankly, were not able to take advantage of state and federal programs in the past, because they didn't have the technical knowledge to go through the program, they didn't have, they didn't know, or they didn't qualify. So what Mark Ward and I have talked about is trying to find ways of developing programs that we can find some of those small businesses that honestly were too, almost too small to get some of the federal and state funds that came out in. So those are some of the things that I would like to, I'm going to be working on and bring back to the board, or bring back in, as we do it, either bring back to the board, or bring back into, as the policy committee's guidance on, bring back to the board.
I would like to see, this is so important, we never, ever probably get this much money again. And I know it's been over a period of time, I know we're not going to spend all of it, we need some. But I would, much as I hate to go to another meeting, I would like to see a little workshop or something, specifically targeted in the American Rescue Plan. So, you know, and give it the importance it is, you know, to a price dollar. You know, we talk, I talk forever about minority, not minority, but small business players, innovative things for them. So I think we need to perhaps have like some kind of special, something for American Rescue, whatever month we want to do it. And so we can really treat that as a means to treat.
I, I think that discussion would be better for a workshop than at a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And you, you, you're probably not going to be ready to do that in July. You would do, would do that better in August.
Probably. And, and some of that is also going to depend on exactly, once we get a better understanding of what the state's going to come. The Senate, the Senate budget's already been transferred over to the House, so what the House comes back to the Senate with will give us a better understanding on where the dialogue is going to hopefully fall.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Uh, the other thing is, I spoke with Representative Pierce this morning. He had originally arranged to have a meeting with the Speaker of the House last week, but the Speaker had a family emergency that came up, so he was not, so he had to cancel that. But they have rearranged so that we have an appointment for July twenty-first at eleven o'clock. It would be at the Speaker's office in Raleigh. If any commissioners are willing and able to attend, it would be nice to have. He's going to be a whole lot more interested in speaking to you than to me. So any commissioners who are willing and able to attend would do so. I've also had Representative Pierce's request, I've also extended this invitation to the city manager, for city council members. So if, looking for funding, at the possibility of, if they're funding for the Laurel Hill Community Center, and also as a potential one-time fund for the Ellis Johnson Project, those are the two large areas that would be there. Since the state is in the position for the first time in the history that I can remember, they actually have a lot of money that they're trying to figure out how to spend. So.
Would it be prudent to ask somebody from school board to perhaps go with us regarding the A and J project?
I think you would, yeah. And since you're willing to do a part, I don't think, I think it would be a good idea, at least to stay in touch.
We can probably send the invitation to the entire committee and see who can attend.
From this group, do we have anyone here who knows that they can't attend on the twenty-first?
Well.
You got it.
Yes, though maybe, I mean, I can be there at the eleven, but I'm going to have to be on the way back by twelve, as we have, you all received the invitation today for Shore Properties about motorcycle. Police department, when it was redone, and they're showing that during the three-hour period that day. So I need to be back for that sometime. And then later that afternoon, we have EJ, and it's also my birthday. Probably have to be there. The, the, the Shore Properties, what, twelve, the three, twelve, it is just a drop, it is not, you want to stay every hour.
I think I have a lot. Oh, sir.
Well, anybody who can attend.
I'll be there. Let's see if we can make that invitation to school board.
Right now, I think I'll be there, but I just can't put it, fill me in with that knowledge, and I got to get out of there by twelve, which I don't think will be getting pissed off.
You should be there that moment.
Yeah. I'm sure that we all are just involved, obviously, in that fact, but we both got that A and J. So, yeah.
I want to speak to Dr. Legrand, extend the invitation.
Do we have a scheduled meeting with the school board, or?
We have, we have a scheduled meeting, and we would recess this meeting till Wednesday at six o'clock at the Honeycutt Center in the community.
That date is what, fifteen fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah, I put the thirteen on there, so that's tomorrow, no. Fourteen.
And, and, Mr. Patterson, you had mentioned that there was a meeting?
Dr. Legrand and I have arranged a meeting for the chairs, the vice chairs of both boards tomorrow at four thirty at A and J Gibson's.
And?
Before we meet?
Yes. Uh, part, part of the, part of it's, the statute goes off and has that the chairs and vice chair, the chairs will meet and.
That's after mediation is not resolved. And, and, and we are outside of the mediation in seven days. So we're not going into this expecting mediation process, right? Because it's outside of that timeframe.
Well, initially, I think the hook is that the board, before, and it may be a war, did you?
Well, no, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we can't need to have an agreement, but it's not a formal mediation process, number one.
No.
And, and, and if it were, the process is that the chairs and vice chairs meet after the original mediation, not before the original, that's not the statute. Even though, and I know we're not going into that, so it probably doesn't matter, but I'm just trying to figure out the reason that the chairs and vice chairs meeting prior to our meeting together.
So they can sit down and lay out just general expectations?
I, I think we know what that is. But that's my question on, I just want to make sure we weren't going into this with some mediation, because. Very, you witnessed that, I made that very clear that day, with the school board. We're in the I and J meeting when that email came out that they canceled. But I said, you understand, and the statute says that.
When you say that, are you talking about school board?
Yes.
That was a joint agreement.
I understand that, but I, I just, and, and I don't, I don't know, it was, it was during that meeting when we got the cancellation. Like, I didn't cancel it, didn't know anything about other people were meeting at that. And, and I, and I, and I just told them that I thought they need to, maybe we all need to look at that. It causes me a liberal word for word, the statute says seven days from the day the budget was passed, and after that, mediation is off the table, so.
So I want to ask that question, Mr. Johnson, so is mediation off the table?
No, it's not.
It is not off the table?
No, there was a mutual agreement between both the board, as far as the, which the representative of both the board, that given that we could not get a mediator appointed, there was no possibility that a mediator appoint, judge, due for that, you were there involved in process, and so we, I'm not sure we first found out about it, but the school board, I think, met on Saturday?
Friday afternoon.
Was it Friday afternoon? You got the letters sent anymore, or you distributed?
I got the email Saturday, and it was distributed. It was mailed Saturday, so it was received.
There was no, there was no way possible to, to get a mediator by what would have been the money deadline, so. There was no effort to avoid mediation, it was an effort to try to be sure that we had some time to be able to organize things and give the board an opportunity to meet. So the process is not irritable, if it's still there to be used, it was necessary, it was necessary.
You're talking about the mediation process?
Yes.
But the statute clearly says it's seven days, it doesn't give an option, it doesn't say you can put it off. It says you can if you met her in the seven.
I guess it, I guess it made the board complain about it, there's some.
Well, there's one board that complained about it, and because I'm reading it word for word, and, and I don't think we need to set that expectation. And I'm not saying we can't go into some more mediation or, or joint board agreement with it, because I think we should, but as far as the statute's concerned, because if we go into it under that statute, under the mediation, and, and none of it works out, and then the vice chair and the chairs meet, and none of that works out, there's another formula under that, if you grab a red to the bottom of that, that calculates what you, if you can't answer in mediation, there's a formula down there. And it goes into quite a bit of a calculation of how you, what you're going to have to give to the school board. And while I haven't put the exact number to that yet, we're not going to like it. And so I don't want to have that expectation level that this is the general statute, and I don't have the paper with me right now. Mediation is my.
But Commissioner, I think by the agreement that we made in canceling that meeting, I think between our attorneys, I think that expectation is probably already set, is my thinking.
I understand that, I'm just, I'm doing it for my unvast education of reading the statute word for word, and it's very ambiguous, it doesn't give a rule for option or interpretation. It says it will be conducted within seven days of the date the county commissioners pass the budget. It doesn't say but, it doesn't say may, it doesn't say if, before, or any of that. It states very clearly that after that date, that it's not valid. And although if you meet on that date, you can continue with, with a mutual agreement, okay? So, you know, it can go on up until August first, at which time it's all. And that's just a literal reading of statute. But if we go into this with this mediation by the statute's version, not our own, but by the statute's version, we're going to fall, you fall under that formula, and I, and you need to read that formula. And you've seen that, and, and it's quite complicated. We think the school board formula is complicated, you try to read that, and, and.
Is that formula in the statute?
It's in the statute, word for word, tells you exactly what to pull where, how much to add, and double this, and times that, and divided this, and it's, it's worse than trying to figure the school board on. And we know how bad that is, trying to figure it out. So just a rough computation of that, we aren't going to like it. And I just don't want to have that expectation set in there, that we're under this general statute mediation. When that, when you read it, that's not where we are.
Well, I think the expectation is, and we hope anytime we have a mediation is clearly to resolve without spending additional time and resources and funds, a way that could fit both parties and give the fact that these two boards are, you know, it involves other things, not extremely far apart. We all already know that there will be some, where it can be resolved, and.
I, I'm with a hundred percent agreement, I think you're right, I think we'll agree somewhere in there. But I always leave that door open, what is, what is?
Well, you know, both boards are aware of the statute you're talking about. Here, four judges are aware of the fact that we're dealing with that.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I got all that, I just want to go in there that we're under general statute, fourteen, five, nine, whatever the number is. And that's what we're operating in, and we're clearly outside of that statute.
But again, my question to our attorney is, do their attorney have the same understanding that he has?
Or you all know that there is something that's not under the law. If you want to buy, I'll tell you that, and I appreciate what you're saying, I really appreciate it, it says shall, but I'm talking with the attorney for the school board, that they've done a number of these mediations. It's apparently a common practice to, given the timeline, to do it in a way that's. And it's not an effort to avoid statute, it's just simply, practically standing the way. In a situation like these, there would be no way to securely mediate on that number. Nor did, I'm not even sure that's true, because I've noticed.
No, they, they sent everyone a letter by Felix, and actually, I received his response today. I did not look at the timestamp on when he received his letter.
You say you received his response today?
Yes.
Who?
Uh, just re-pressed. And it was basically, it was a letter response, it was.
Is he the mediator?
No, no, he is our resident.
I know who he is, but he's.
And it was his response was. His response was just a restatement of general statute.
So we assume we're going into it without meeting? Is that what you said, huh?
And the hope is that we'll come to an agreement in a meeting without mediator only.
Well, I think that's certain of it.
But I go back to the original question, why are the chairs and the vice chairs meeting tomorrow? If the board has to make the decision. I mean, you can go in there and promise whatever, but then.
Well, that, I think, well, one, I didn't know I was, potentially, potentially I could have been a member of that. But there could have been any one of seven of us who attended that meeting, whoever the chairman was going to be. But, but Ms. Goldston had mentioned before the meeting, that during the comments, that whoever was going to that meeting needed some direction from the group as to if you wanted us to go in and try to negotiate something.
Looking at me, I was going, we couldn't come to a agreement, so I don't know how, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we need to move before, I mean, I, I heard that there was going to be a meeting tomorrow, and if you all were tuned in, but I didn't, I don't know what that purpose was. But I know from where it is, in my mind, it's just going to be a bunch of hoots off from the same that we've already done. I don't, I don't.
Just the whole order, supposedly.
At minimum, tomorrow's meeting will just be shut down, or this is organizational structure.
Could they need us to wait?
If you go off, and it's best to have both, both of the chair to have a understanding exactly how the meeting is going to flow and everything, organization on a operational issues. Who conducts that meeting? And that's, because you would, both, basically, both open the meeting, and open your individual meetings, and go back and forth. And under ideal situation, that, so what, that is when the mediator would ultimately take over the meeting.
But there won't be a mediator there?
It is likely will not be a mediator there, or that if they, if we have one, they would likely be virtual. flow, or no, at this point in time, the two boards are entrenched, and we are not going to really negotiate, so we're going to sit together and get together, and we're just going to schedule a date to be determined, or this board may, the boards may say, you know what, y'all just start to figure out where everybody is, and we're going to act and negotiate. But, you know, just figuring out the expectations of both boards before you get into the room. So hopefully, the boards are not shocked when you come here.
So Mr. Turner, there is a possibility that there will be a mediator on the evening?
I don't think you'll have one.
I, I, you can't say they're virtual.
Well, that's possible, but I don't, I don't anticipate that. But I also don't worry if it's like a time to build a mediator.
I think we do, that's mediated enough, so I agree with that, I just don't.
And, and I don't want to sound careless when I say wasted, but if we're going in saying we're sticking to 9.88, and they're coming and saying we're stick, I don't, where are we going?
Well, I, well, maybe that's the question that we're trying to figure out from this group, are we committed that we're not going to go any different than the 9.85?
I would say no.
You say we're not committed, right?
That's what I would say.
We're not committed.
I mean, we got to have room.
Yeah, that's what we kind of, we need to understand right now is what, what.
But I mean, I'm only speaking for me.
Yeah, so, but, but not here.
Significant, I mean, you're one seventh of this, of this group, and I think.
But I mean, I keep saying that, I, I'm just saying that we don't shut the doors.
Yeah, or I would hope that we would, and I think that's what I would hope, that part of the conversation among the chair and vice chair is that we are going there open-minded as to what we can come to agree to. But we need to know that we're willing to be open-minded.
Well, you know, my mind has stayed open, so I'm not going, I'm, I'll get a picture of what, for me, I think it's those who wrote it, as we know it, have decided, if your mind is open.
I can, I can tell you the mind.
Well, it's not that a whole lot different between, anyway, so I think we should be able to, and I very, I really feel that again.
I would hate to see it spend a lot of money to, on resolving a difference that's less than $200,000.
Yes.
And we end up spending just about that.
Yeah, so I think it's very possible, I'm just confused about tomorrow, if I'm going to be a part of that, I don't have any ideas, so hope it's quick and all the brain with this.
Well, I, I think that, I think, I think there would be more having a conversation.
Okay. All right. I get it, I'm going to have, I have.
What time is this? 4:00 and where is it?
AB Gibson. So what will be the meeting, the good for me?
I got you. Okay. Any, any other comments from commissioners?
Well, that was my big question, so I think we just about, you know, have talked about it, so.
Reverend Gibson, anything else? Commissioner Patterson?
Other than Commissioner Reverend Gibson and I just came back from DC to the Vancouver Conference.
Sure, it's okay. I wasn't.
Um, it wasn't as I expected, because I was expecting to think of legislative, which I knew we weren't meeting with legislature, there were less people there, and there were less breakouts that involved people, when it was, you know, years to do, and all that, so I would say that, in my mind, that martial public was the best script that we had. But Secretary.
The last, the last print, when I was on the school board, a long time ago, after every, every evening, I always sat at the table, newspapers would come out and list everything that.
It's all on your website.
It's on the website now, so, so we can still, we can get what I'm saying.
Commissioner Goldston, can I move on to that, please? Uh, did you want, did you want to make a comment about the conference? Commissioner Goldston, do you have anything else? Commissioner McColl, are you still with us?
I am still with you, I'm just seeing everyone, and I hope to see you all soon. Very good meeting.
I hope you, I hope you, I hope you get better soon. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
And I have no comment. Uh, do we have a weekend adjournment?
Resede.
Resede till 6:00?
The 14th.
The 14th, not the 13th, I'm, it's 6:00, Honeycutt Center. Do we have a motion?
14th.
14th. We have a motion.
A motion.
And a second, so if Commissioner Goldston, all favor say aye.
Aye.
We are resede.
There we go.